Good evening, everybody. It is such a great evening to see everybody here, hearing all the conversations that are going on. We welcome you to our board meeting. The first thing on our agenda, I'm going to invite Ms. Cameron to come forward to introduce a very special guest for us.
Giles, Chairman Gaskins, Board members, district staff, community members. Renata is a third grader at Waukama Elementary, and it has been a true pleasure watching her learn and grow for the past several years as her principal. During her spare time, Renata enjoys playing soccer and helping out with her family's restaurant, Cabaneros in Polley's Island. Special thanks to the Garcia family for being loyal business partners, but for most importantly, being supportive and involved parents over the last several years. Your dedication and trust in our school and family, our school family is much appreciated. Our motto at WES is focused, fearless, and family, and Renata is a true example of all three. Her third grade teacher, Ms. Johnson, had this to say about her. "Renata is a fabulous student who is attentive during class. She shows confidence when faced with tasks or challenges, and most importantly demonstrates respect and kindness to everyone she encounters. We are truly proud to call her a WES Dolphin." It is with great honor that I introduce to you Ms. Renata Garcia to lead the pledge.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow your heads for the moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Renata. The first thing on the agenda this evening is recognition time. Mr. Keith Brown.
Good evening, Chairman Gaskins, Dr. Giles, members of the board, district staff, and community folks that are here with us tonight. I'm here to brag on our physical education teachers and our schools. We have 11 schools that are going to be recognized here tonight by the Alliance for a Healthy Generation. This is the same organization that we wrote a grant for back in 2019 and got $221,016 for our physical education wellness programs, along with a $3,000 grant from Liv Well Georgetown. And then we are one of three Fitness Graham influencer districts in the state of South Carolina, which means we get conference membership, conference fees, lots of PLT time, all for free, and saving the district any kind of conference or membership or travel or room and board, over $10,000 worth of benefits from that. Our healthiest schools, I'm going to let Mr. Seth Shelby, who is here, and he is from the Alliance for Healthier Generation, I'm going to let him just say a word or two, and then I would like to recognize all of them with a certificate and ask that you all come down in front to be able to shake their hands. Mr. Shelby.
Thank you, Keith, and thank you for the board for allowing me to be here tonight. Again, my name is Seth Shelby. I'm a project manager with the Alliance for Healthier Generation. While I live in Columbia, Georgetown has a lot of roots for me. My late stepfather was a physical education teacher at Kensington and previously at Carvers Bay before that, and my mother, who is in attendance today, is a retired school teacher from Andrews as well. So Georgetown definitely has a place in my heart, and working with these amazing professionals over the last three years has just been one of the most incredible things I've ever done within this journey that I've been on. This recognition is significant. This is national recognition. While they certainly have the state accolades with their South Carolina Fitness Graham initiative, Keith and the PE teachers in this district are really setting the tone in terms of creating better policy systems and environments where kids can move more. We all know in this room, most of us, that healthier kids learn better. Academic achievement and movement are very much so linked. How kids eat, how they sleep, how much screen time they get, all those things are very much so connected to their academic outcomes. So the more that we can do to support health and wellness is a good thing for our kids and their futures. So this award is all about that. We are going to use this as a catalyst, if you will. We're going to continue to build. We're, PE teachers won't be the only ones in here next year. You can mark my words on that. We want to work with our nutrition services, our family engagement specialists. We want everyone in the room to celebrate and come together for this amazing award. But tonight, it's for our PE teachers. So without any further ado, I'm going to pass it back over to Keith so we can get them recognized. Thank you.
Okay, teachers, if you will come up with your administrators, any of them that are here with you representing your school. Hayden Dawson and Ronald Moore from Andrews Elementary. Mr. Joel Sapp from Sampit Elementary. I don't know if the Rosemary Middle School folks are here. Kimberly Griffith and Michael Stapleton. Some of our folks are actually coaching. Nicole Watts from Pleasant Hill Elementary. Mr. Nicholas DeJohn from Carvers Bay Middle. Mr. Nick Dunk from Kensington Elementary, formerly of McDonnell Elementary. Mr. Colin Russell from Maryville Elementary. Mr. John Fullerton, representing McDonnell Elementary. Mr. Jared Carlson and Ms. Jean Russell from Georgetown Middle. Ms. Rebecca Carrera from Waukama Intermediate. Mr. Alan Hatcher from Waukama Intermediate. From Waukama High School. Mr. Don Williams, who is coaching tonight, Mr. Jeff Gregory, and Mr. Gordon Walters.
Dr. Brandon, if you'll go to the end down there. On three, one, two, three. Again, on three, one, two, three. Thank you, and congratulations.
Board members, if you would please stay for the next presentation.
They're already back.
Good afternoon again to everyone, Chairman Gaskins, members of the board, district administration, and to our Georgetown County extended family. We do say good afternoon. Board members and leadership teams, training is a priority for South Carolina School Boards Association. Established in 1982, South Carolina School Board Association's Boardmanship Institute offers a year-round training curriculum focused on leadership skills for board members on state and national educational issues. This afternoon, we are pleased to honor those individuals who have reached one of the six levels in South Carolina School Board Association's Boardmanship Institute. Congratulations to the following board members: Mr. Robert Cox, Level 2; Mr. Scott Dubose, Level 2; and Mr. Keith Moore, Level 2.
training, which is very, very important for our growth as board members, and I hope that this board will continue to value that process. Next is our public comments. The public comment period is generally limited to 30 minutes. Comments or requests should be brief and as to the point as possible and shall not exceed three minutes. Speakers may offer constructive criticism of school operations and programs. However, the board will not hear complaints about specific personnel or students. Those complaints shall be brought to the appropriate supervisory personnel or board members privately. Further, persons commenting and members of the audience must remain civil and respectful at all times. Anyone violating these guidelines may be asked to leave the meeting. Our first public speaker is. Cormega Myers. Cormega? Cormega? Cormega Myers. I apologize.
I just have a question, followed by a brief statement. I wanted to know why there's not a bullying policy in place. My child's life has been threatened multiple times. He's been bullied severely for over the span of two years. The school board members, teachers, and administrators have turned a blind eye to my concerns. There needs to be a change of heart, and a light needs to be shed on this matter. Our Lord and Savior would not approve of the abuse that gets swept under the rug. Me and my wife were threatened with DSS for wanting to take my child out of school because of the severe bullying. My mother was also called on me instead of handling the situation appropriately. There was a lack of compassion and empathy, and the behaviors of the administrators is unacceptable. That's all that I have to say.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ayesha Tucker.
Good afternoon, Dr. Giles and members of the board. I have a 10-year-old son that attends one of the elementary schools in the district. I stand before you today to say thank you to Mr. Cox for addressing the issue of bullying in our schools. I think that it is a common problem that has been swept under the rug for some time now. I think that the schools don't want it to be labeled as such, but it does go on each and every day in our schools. Oftentimes, our children are suffering in silence. Children are begging, crying, and pleading with parents to not go to school for the things that are being said to them at school when teachers are not around or in ears-length. I remember my son being in kindergarten and being bullied on a bus by a much older student. I went to the school, addressed the issue, and asked to pull the cameras, and to no prevail or resolution. I ended up pulling my child from that school and moved him to another school in the district. I can recall last year, my son crying while doing his homework for comments that were being made to him in school to say, and I quote, "You are not smart enough," to on career day, when he dressed up like a rapper and was asked by the kids what he dressed like, the kids responded in laughter. To the most recent incident on August 26, I went to pick my son up from school, and to my surprise, he came home with a busted lip. And I was informed by the school. I called immediately, I was not informed by the school, I called immediately and spoke to all staff members involved about the incident. Some may say that it is just kids being kids, but when it affects a child's confidence, what do you do about that? I leave with you today that I think that not only the recommendation of cameras, but children being allowed the freedom to tell teachers what is really happening, instead of being told that kids are tattling or stirring up drama. When issues arise, I think that the solution needs to be investigated properly, and parents need to be notified when things like this happen. Resolution: I think that cameras need to be put in place in our schools to include hallways, cafeterias, and blind spots. I think that if a camera was in place, I would have been able to see the actual account of what happened to my child. My question to the board is, how would you feel if your child came home from school crying about what was being said to them at school? The old saying goes, "Sticks and stones may break my bones, but words never hurt." Why, I'm here to tell you that words do hurt. I would like to take the time to thank each and every one of you for allowing me to speak on this issue, and may God bless you with the decision-making going forward.
Thank you very much. Here. Ms. Sabrina Holmes.
Good evening. My name is Sabrina Holmes. I serve as the PTO president of Plannersville Elementary Digital Immersion School. I also serve on the SIC and a member of the parent cabinet. Since the 1950s to present, Plannersville Elementary Digital Immersion School serves the Plannersville community to educate children and parents, improve student improvement, achievement, and a direct resourceful center to improve and enhance community growth academically, socially, culturally, and spiritually. In collaboration with the local churches and nonprofit organizations, PEDIS has benefited greatly in meeting the needs of children, families, and supporting them in the academic, social, and emotional health experiences. The school is the core of the tri-community to help to develop, mold, and shape our children ages 3 to 12 for a strong community. With a shared vision, goals, and mission, the students learn and thrive in their school environment when families, parents, and the community work together collectively. The collective vision of the community is enhanced by its culture. It is crucial to educate and develop children ages 3 to 12 in their cultural environment. So removing Plannersville Elementary, removing Plannersville Elementary school kids from their community will impact the lives of the children, families, and the community. There will be a decrease in student-parent attendance and participation in school events. The Plannersville community-family structure shows that parents work outside of the community. Based upon this fact, there will be an increase in parents struggling to participate in the children's activity because of their work hours. The students' extended bus riding time to and from school will be a negative impact physically and mentally from day to day. Thank you for listening on this afternoon.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Drayton, Mr. Dustin Drayton. Next speaker is Mr. Katara Moultrie. Oh, miss, excuse me.
Good evening. My name is Katana Moultrie. I am a parent of a child that attends Plannersville Elementary School. I ask that all Plannersville residents who are present to please stand. We understand that the enrollment at Plannersville Elementary School has dropped. However, we believe there are things we together can do to remedy the drop in enrollment and students going from the community to other schools. You have already taken the final steps by converting Plannersville Elementary School to a magnet school. The first year of magnet, our attendance has increased from 68 in 2023 through 2024 school year to 84 as of today. Other things that we can do are strategies to increase PES enrollment, door-to-door survey, this imminent Plannersville Elementary School flyer with success stories, new academic five-year plan, open enrollment fair, advertise on social media, businesses, and churches. In order to be successful with these goals, you must recruit explanatory teachers who are committed to teaching in our community. These are commitments from Georgetown County School District as indicated in the school renewal plan for years 2021 through 2026. Based on the Plannersville Elementary School's strategic plan, which was accepted and signed off by the board and superintendent, it states, quote, "The school district makes special and intensive efforts to recruit in bold and give priority in bold to serving those parents and guardians of children ages birth through five years who are considered at risk of school failure. It is with sincere commitment to the mission, goals, and vision of Plannersville Elementary School that we, as constituents of the Plannersville community, ask that you accept our plea to work with us to keep our school open. We love our school. We want our school to remain in our community. We ask that you do not take the pillar of our cultural enhancement from us, but aid us in enhancing our culture by keeping the school in our community. Thank you for listening to the concerns of the Plannersville community-family."
Thank you very much. Ms. Tamika Singleton.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Tamika Singleton, as you just stated, and I'm going to be basically restating some of what was just said. I am a concerned parent as well of two young children currently attending Plannersville Elementary, the same school that I attended as a child. I stand before you today to respectfully urge you to reconsider the decision to close this vital institution, which has been the heart of our community for generations. I understand that the board has concerns about the high per-student cost due to low enrollment. However, I'd like to present a few reasons why Plannersville Elementary should remain open. Community impact is number one. Plannersville Elementary is not just a school. It is the lifeblood of our community. Generations of families, including my own, have been educated here. Closing the school would disrupt the social fabric of our community and displace students who thrive in this nurturing environment. Number two, the new digital immersion program. The recently introduced digital immersion program offers our children access to cutting-edge educational tools and techniques. Closing the school now would deprive us of the opportunity to see this program reach its full potential. Number three, transportation challenges. The closure of Plannersville Elementary would force young children, including my pre-K and first-grade students, to endure longer bus rides to distant schools. This not only poses a safety risk, but also diminishes their educational experience due to increased fatigue and reduced time for after-school activities. Economic impact: The school is a significant employer in the area, and its closure would result in job losses that could further destabilize our already fragile local economy. The ripple effects of shutting down this school would be felt throughout our community. Historical significance, I'll end here. Plannersville Elementary has been a cornerstone of education in our community for decades. Preserving this school honors the history and legacy of those who have worked tirelessly to educate generations of children in this rural area. I understand the concern about the high per-cost student ratio, but I believe rather than closing the school, we should explore the options presented, alternative solutions such as enhancing the enrollment through targeted outreach. Furthermore, if the school is closed, consideration must be given to the ongoing building maintenance expenses. These costs, along with potential transportation expenses for relocating students and unemployment costs for staff, could outweigh the perceived savings from closure. The loss of this community anchor would also create a void that cannot easily be filled. I urge the board to give us, the parents and community members, the opportunity to respond to your concerns and work together to find a solution to keep Plannersville open.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker is Mr. Dustin Drayton.
Plannersville School is a great place to be. I love my teachers, and they love me. Mrs. Stanley loves us, too. I love working on computers and going to special areas. I love wearing my uniform, too. I'm doing well in school, so please, please don't close down my school. I'm Dustin Drayton.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Moving on with the approval of our minutes. You have received minutes from our special called Board Meetings on August the 12th, 13th, and 14th, and from our board work session meeting on August the 20th. Is there a motion that we approve these minutes?
So moved. Second.
It's moved and second. Any discussion? Hearing none? I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The minutes are now approved. Next, we have the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as is?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The agenda is approved. The first thing on the agenda is the update on the superintendent search. On September the 16th and 17th, we will have our four candidates for superintendent in the district touring the district meeting with various groups within the district. The public is invited to a meet and greet here at the boardroom from 6:30 to 7:15. Each candidate will give a five-minute presentation during that time. Then after all the four presentations, you'll be able to walk around and meet the four different candidates. Hopefully, we're still on target of naming a superintendent by October the 1st or the 8th of October. And just FYI to our board members, we, this is a special called board meeting, and we will need to be here at 4:30 on both of those days. We'll have to start in here, then go into executive session for the interviews. Thank you very much. And moving on to Food Service Fund, Change in Accounting Methods. We have Ms. Johnson and Mr. Harris Darver with Strict Solution, who's meeting with us virtually.
Chairman Gaskins, board members, and Dr. Giles. I'll give Harris a minute to get on and Christie to get all of it connected, but just wanted to tell you, the information item that we're bringing to you tonight is a change in accounting method. We are asking to reclassify the Food Service Fund, which is an enterprise fund, to a special revenue fund, because most of the funding that we get is federal-funded from the USDA. Our new audit firm has requested this change, and we actually, we have discussed it internally for a few years, and Mr. Brent Street is here tonight, too. He's here to represent food service. He is on board with this, and Harris is going to go through some of the highlights for you and kind of give you the why and the what of what we're asking for. So I'll turn it over to him. I love wearing my uniform too. I'm doing well in school, so please, please don't close down my school. I'm Dustin Drayton.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Moving on with the approval of our minutes. You have received minutes from our special called Board Meetings on August the twelfth, thirteenth and fourteenth, and from our Board Work Session meeting on August the twentieth. Is there a motion that we approve these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The minutes are now approved. Next, we have the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as is?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The agenda is approved. The first thing on the agenda is the update on the superintendent search. On September the sixteenth and seventeenth, we will have our four candidates for superintendent in the district touring the district meeting with various groups within the district. The public is invited to a meet and greet here at the boardroom from six-thirty to Each candidate will give a five-minute presentation during that time. Then after all the four presentations, you'll be able to walk around and meet the four different candidates. Hopefully, we're still on target of naming a superintendent by October the first or the eighth of October. And just FYI to our board members, we, this is a special called board meeting, and we will need to be here at four-thirty on both of those days. We'll have to start in here, then go into executive session for the interviews. Thank you very much. And moving on to Food Service Fund, change in accounting methods. We have Ms. Johnson and Mr. Harris Darver with Strict Solution, who's meeting with us virtually.
Yes, sir. Chairman Gaskins, board members and Dr. Giles. I'll give Harris a minute to get on and Christie to get all of it connected, but just wanted to tell you, the information item that we're bringing to you tonight is a change in accounting method. We are asking to reclassify the Food Service Fund, which is an enterprise fund, to a special revenue fund, because most of the funding that we get is federal-funded from the USDA. Our new audit firm has requested this change, and actually, we have discussed it internally for a few years. And Mr. Brent Street is here tonight too. He's here to represent Food Service. He is on board with this. And Harris is going to go through some of the highlights for you and kind of give you the why and the what of what we're asking for. So I'll turn it over to him.
Actually, a change in accounting method, moving the Food Service Fund from an enterprise fund to a special revenue fund. What this does is it combines the Food Service Fund, as y'all have traditionally seen it, kind of broken out as a separate classification for the district to be classified with all of the other funds. So moving forward, when you're reviewing financial information of the district, including the audit, it'll be all reported, the overall governmental entity as a whole, the entire district, including the Food Service, instead of previously, as was done, carving it out. Historically, the State Department of Education has not provided guidance on whether or not they recommended Food Service Funds to be treated as a special revenue fund or enterprise fund, and we've seen kind of districts across the state do it differently. In recent years, we've seen a large push to move these funds to special revenue funds because boards and public users wanted to see this information for the overall governmental entity. Long ago, the days of treating these funds as enterprise funds where they operated as a separate business, supporting the district, are gone, where these are actual functions of the district now and part of the district operations. So this change really just changes the methodology to include the reporting for these funds. It doesn't change the way anything is treated for them, how the funds operate, who receives the benefits, changes nothing of the child nutrition program. It's strictly an accounting treatment to include them in one governmental activity instead of separating the governmental activities and the enterprise business type of activities. In the Q and A document, we've walked through a couple of these, why it should be considered. I've gone through that. The source of funds pretty much dictates that these do qualify for special revenue funds. I mentioned before that the state hasn't really provided that difference. The impact that it'll have on the financial statements is strictly that all of the long-term functions that are shown in this fund, including the pension, OPEB liabilities, as well as capital assets, will now be removed and presented on the government-wide financial statements just like the rest of the district. This was the only fund that presented that information on the basic statements. That'll now be eliminated and will be included with the governmental activities. None of the other funds go away. It just is a reclassification, as I previously mentioned, and from an operational standpoint, capital assets depreciation stays intact, as well as indirect costs and other charges that the district can have. And before anybody receiving free and reduced meals would continue in those, as no operational changes, it's strictly a financial recording impact. Are there any other questions? I know y'all have had a chance to review this document. I just wanted to be here to answer anything if there was.
Hearing none. Thank you. Thank you very much.
We'll bring it back next meeting.
Mr. Darver.
Next public meeting for a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, on the Agenda Bullying Awareness Update, Academic and Student Services and Safety and Risk Management is going to be presenting together.
Greetings, Chairman Gaskins, members of the board, Dr. Giles. This afternoon, this evening, we want to share information on our current policies, procedures and programs on bullying and bullying awareness. We want to begin this evening with a working definition that will serve as the foundation for the presentation. And so as you are looking at this, do note that this is taken directly from our code of conduct, from the district's code of conduct, and notice that it says deliberate and repeated and the intentionality. So our framework for this afternoon will be this definition, and you'll hear more about our procedures, our policies and programs.
Mr. Gaskins, Dr. Giles, board members, good evening. Over the next few minutes, I'm going to talk a little bit about the OVAES Bullying Prevention Program and what it brings to the table, its philosophy, its content and its provisions in reference to bullying, anti-bullying. Before I do that, I want to briefly talk about Dr. Dan Oveaas. He is the founder of the Oveaas Bullying Prevention Program. His work spans back over forty years. The Oveaas Program was bought to the United States in the nineteen-nineties by Dr. Sue Limberman. She's a PhD level at Clemson University, and she's the pioneer of Oveaas being implemented into the schools in the United, in South Carolina. I want to piggyback off of what Dr. Vereen said just now about, you know, the definition of bullying, and I want to read to you what Dr. Oveaas' definition of bullying is. Bullying is when someone repeatedly and on purpose says or does mean or hurtful things to another person who has a hard time defending him or herself. That's the definition of bullying. Now, we're going to go forward and talk about why we think the Oveaas Bullying Prevention Program works. Again, it goes back over forty years, and the Oveaas Bullying Prevention Program, OBPP, incorporates what researchers and practitioners have identified as best practices in bullying prevention and intervention. It focuses on the whole school environment. It has a holistic approach. The OBPP is a comprehensive school-wide program that involves the entire school community in the form of school-wide interventions, classroom activities and individual interventions. To reduce bullying, it is important to change the climate of the school and the social norms with regard to bullying. Since bullying is not the sole responsibility of any single individual at a school, I'll say that again, since bullying is not the sole responsibility of any single individual at a school, it requires buy-in and efforts of everyone in the school environment, teachers, administrators, counselors, other non-teaching staffs such as bus drivers, nurses, school resource officers, custodians, cafeteria workers and school librarians, parents and students. The program also offers a survey. It assesses bullying at the school. The Oveaas Bullying Questionnaire, OBQ, is an anonymous school research-based survey administered to students that assesses the nature, extent and location of bullying problems in a school. Adults are not always accurate in estimating the prevalence of bullying at the school and are frequently surprised by the amount of bullying that students experience and types of bullying that are most common or the hotspots where bullying happens. Surveying annually is recommended to determine program effectiveness and areas for continued attention. Now, the surveys are done once a year. Once a year. We had an option to do them twice a year, but we chose once a year, and that survey is administered in September yearly, once a year, okay? Now, September, the surveys are administered to the counselors. They administer them to the student population. Once they're done, they upload it, forward it back to the Bedded Ford Foundation, the Hazleton Bedded Ford Foundation. They calculate all the material, put everything together, send it back to our department, the safety department. We then forward it back to the principals. We double-check to make sure everybody's got their surveys, and what it is, it gives the administration a blueprint from a kid's perspective on how they feel about bullying within that particular school. And it gives them what they need to go forward with a blueprint or plan of action, making adjustments if need be. That's the reason for the surveys. It's a good tool. Next, it forms a group to support bullying prevention activities, the Oveaas Bullying Prevention Coordinating Committee, BPCC. Now, let me say this. Every school has a leadership team or a supervisory team or a safety team. Whatever they have, that can be your bullying coordinating committee. Now, the safety department is responsible for training that group of people, whether it's five, six, seven, twelve or whatever. We train them initially, okay? We give them a presentation, give them the tools they need, and they're responsible to train everybody else at the school level. All the different names and positions we named earlier, they're responsible for training these people. Now, this program is not a safety department project. It belongs to the schools. Once we train that initial group of people, the coordinating committee, it belongs to the school, and they work the program. We assist them with training if they need it. That's how the program works, okay? Let's talk about-
I'm sorry. Could I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
About the teams, your leadership and supervisory team at each school. So that would be the group that if a parent had an issue or if a student had an issue and they told their parent or they told whatever, what's the process? So that complaint then goes to that team?
It does. It should, but that parent goes to the administration. The administration goes to the counselor, which will be a part of that team, and they go from there.
Okay.
That's the process.
Okay. And the surveys that you have done, it shows, do the surveys show year to year where the bullying has increased or decreased?
Yes, ma'am. It does. Yes, ma'am. It does.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, let me elaborate just a little more on that. The Oveaas Bullying Prevention Coordinating Committee, BPCC, is a representative group from the school that includes an administrator, a teacher from each grade level, a member of the non-teaching staff, we talked about that earlier, a school counselor or other school-based mental health professional. Now, in conclusion, and this is the good part, continue efforts over time. Successful bullying prevention requires a long-term commitment. The OBPP is a framework for creating systemic change to build a school climate that discourages bullying and addresses it effectively if it occurs. Attitudes and norms in a school setting don't change overnight, but they can and will shift over time. There should be no end date for bullying prevention. It requires continuous attention and should be woven into the entire school environment to become a daily part of school life. The OBPP can be successfully integrated with other universal prevention efforts to create a safe and humane school communities. Going forward, what we will do in the safety department, again, this is not a safety department's project, but our department will make ourselves available, just like we've always done, to assist where needed when it comes to training for Oveaas or whatever it takes. Going forward, that's what we'll be planning to do, to make it right. Yes, sir.
How do you determine if bullying takes place when it's he said, she said? How do you make that determination?
That goes back to the investigation. The staff on the playground, the staff in the classrooms, the staff in the child hall, wherever the allegations or the alleged allegations take place, it all starts from there with the investigation. The staff, the student statements, the staff statements, the resource officers and the administrators. It all goes back to the investigation. And the investigation has to be thorough.
Right.
Whether it's a bullying situation or something else, it has to be a thorough investigation.
Thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Stuckey.
Yes, sir.
With the team concept and just listening to this parent speak, I'm gathering that maybe she didn't get the results that she might have expected from the staff or whatever. I mean, how do we deal with letting them know that, you know, we've done everything that we could do to make sure that their child bullying problem was addressed, you know?
Mr. Walker, I can't, let me answer that this way. When your kids come home and say things you want to believe them, but that communication with administration has to be thorough and transparent. If it's not, then that gives somebody else the opportunity to fill in the blanks. But that communication has to be thorough and transparent every time, and it goes back to the investigation.
Thank you.
Just to bring this up, I'm sure that this does happen, but just to put it out there, I'm sure the cameras are both being used as a part of your investigation.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, I appreciate both of you on coming forward tonight and talking about this sensitive subject, and I think it's, like you've said, it's very important. I think thorough investigations are important. The one thing that concerns me the most through statistics is the bullying that's never reported. The child doesn't report it. The child suffers forever, and if you look at stats, could eventually commit suicide. We can't be naive to believe that that doesn't happen in America. It does. So I want to go back to the big A word, Lonnie. We need awareness. And if I had to put the person up front that needs to be aware, I think it needs to be the students. I think we need to, back when I was in school, when sensitive issues like this came up, we had assemblies. We sat kids down. I remember sitting down and hearing our principals go over policies on bullying and discipline. I think we need to bring the awareness, that big A word, back to the forefront. Surveys are good, but surveys are not touching every child that's being bullied, and that's usually the ones that end up severe, is the ones that go unheard of. So I think if we could really kick in in October, when we get our new superintendent, I'd like to be deeply involved with you and Dr. Vereen on looking at this in a different setting, sitting down at a round table and really just focusing on not missing anything and really concentrate on awareness.
Well, I'm certain that awareness is going to be a part of the game plan going forward.
Thank you so much.
Increased awareness.
Thank you so much.
So I had a question about consequences. I know in our code of conduct, we have a section on bullying and a range of consequences, and I'm wondering if they're significant or serious enough to stem some of the bullying because what's changed lately?
Mr. DeB, I think that's in the next slide.
Oh, it is. Okay. I'm sorry. Pardon. Thank you. Thought I was at the end of it.
No, we're not at the end.
It could have been the end of it. I wouldn't have minded that. Good evening, Chairman Gaskins, Dr. Giles, board members. I'm here to share this portion of this presentation with you on the administrative response to bullying. Of course, all of you know we have a policy, policy J I C F A A, harassment, intimidation or bullying, and the purpose of that policy was to establish the basic structure for maintaining a safe and positive environment for students that is free of intimidation or bullying. Reports can be made in various, various ways. We have the Stop It app. We have parents that phone in, teachers that share things with administrators, and then some students share as well that they are report bullying as well. So those things are how bullying is actually reported to the administration. One of the things that we have in place is a documentation of bullying, and this is something that I think is very, very important. We do have a standard form that bullying should be actually reported on. This would be good for record-keeping purposes to make sure that we are addressing things in a timely manner and then provide that communication back to the parents when that investigation has been completed. It is important to note that the investigation does not only involve the school administration, it involves other personnel as needed. It can involve the SRO officer, Mr. Walters, Mr. Stuckey, Mr. Barber, anyone that needs to be involved in an investigation is involved. And as Mr. Stuckey stated, transparent communication is very, very important, and open communication is very, very important. It's important that bullying is reported in a timely manner, but it's also important that we keep in front of us the real definition of bullying as well. The goal of bullying or our policy is not really all punitive as indicated by most people. They want punitive action. Our goal is also behavior modification as well. We need to address the root causes of why someone is actually bullying, and when that bullying happens, how can we help that person, the aggressor, change their ways and become a more better person and not bully or intimidate other students as being reported. So while issuing the consequences, we have to be, keep in mind that we want to change that behavior as well. And as Mr. DeBose alluded to, we do have consequences in our code of conduct. Those consequences vary according to level and what the offense actually is, whether it was something that was reported, something that was stated, it could have been something over social media, something that was physical or what have you, but the consequences are aligned with the behavior that was actually exhibited, and those things are happening. One of the things that do want to remind you all of is that children do have rights as well, and when we punish students or give them a consequence, we don't have to, we don't tell the aggressor what that consequence is because we just don't want it to be something that is out there, but we try to make sure that we do our due diligence in the investigation process to make sure that the consequence is appropriate and that the aggressor is getting the support or help that he or she needs as well. One of the things that we also have in place to keep us from having conversations like this, all of our schools have what we would call a behavior matrix or something in place that actually- that actually guides their general behavior throughout the school day. Most of you probably seen one and I have one that's, this is from Brown's Ferry Elementary School. You probably see them hanging in buildings. They actually show our students how they are supposed to behave in certain places of the building, in the cafeteria, in the classroom, in assembly programs, um, in the hallways, on the bus. Things like this are taught, things like these are taught to our students daily by school administration and by their teachers in their individual classrooms as well. We have expectations and you might not see these in our schools, um, displayed prominently, but all of our schools are working very hard to make sure that their behavior matrix is in place so we won't have to have conversations, ongoing conversations about negative behavior, which sometimes is labeled as bullying when it's probably not bullying. Have any questions?
I do. How, how, um, I don't know if it's how effective is that Stop It app?
Okay.
Is it being used more? Um, and then the results of these yearly surveys? I know, um, Mr. Stuckey said that they do, you know, they have the results of these yearly surveys and they use them to assess what's going to happen, um, year to year. I guess my question is how effective would you say the whole program is? How effective is the Stop It app? Are more kids using it year over year?
I would have to yield to either Mr. Stuckey or Mr. Walters for that part of it because I know, I get notifications from the Stop It app once someone makes it, if it's at one of the elementary schools. We do get them. I don't get them frequently, so I don't know how often they're actually used or not used, but.
When we get information about bullying on the Stop It app, we, uh, we make sure, whatever school it is that's identified in, in the Stop It app, the narrative section, we make sure that administration gets that. And then it goes back to the code of, well, it goes back to an investigation.
Right.
And then it goes to a code of conduct, conduct. If it's, um, if it's legit during an investigation, it goes back to the code of conduct.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think Lynn, those are some things we need to look into to maybe improve. It all, again, goes back to awareness and making sure we're doing everything we can.
Mr. Cohen, also, um, in regards to, um, handling the aggressor, uh, can you give me a little bit more detail far? Do you get parents involved in counseling or something?
Parents are always involved in the process. So we can either offer several things. Most of the time, the things that we offer or want to put in place, there are stigmas attached to it. So sometimes parents refuse those services, but those are the services that we can offer such as RBHS counseling or going to see a counselor regularly at the school. And sometimes those are the first things that are offered because we want to figure out what the root of the problem actually is. In order to do that, you have to have a trained professional who can actually speak with these students to get to the root of the problem and then we can move forward. But as I stated, unfortunately, sometimes the parents who, um, have to sign off on these things don't because of the stigma attached to it or their child being labeled X, Y or Z.
But this is my part to that question. So if we have a parent who's in denial, uh, what then if this person is continuing to be a problem?
We still, we, we still would not properly treat that trial any differently. We will just, we will just have to move forward and unfortunately, the consequences may become greater because they are refusing the services that have been offered if that behavior continues.
Thank you.
And one last question. Patty.
Go ahead.
At the beginning of the year surveys, share with us some of the information, I guess, that's gathered from that survey because surveys sometimes are different children and different perspectives, that kind of thing. What kinds of information are we really looking at from that survey?
I don't have any surveys with me, uh, tonight, uh, but I can certainly get it to you ma'am. But the surveys, uh, it asks, it breaks it down, uh, grade level. And it breaks it down even further than that, girls and boys. Were you bullied in the first, uh, 10 days of school? Were you bullied in the, in the last 30 days? Uh, were you bullied, um, on the playground, the location, uh, bathroom, cafeteria? Um, and when it comes back, it gives the administrators exactly what the kids' perspectives are in reference to bullying and a location. And again, like I said earlier, that gives them an opportunity to come up with a supervisory change if it's needed. Uh, for an example, on the playground, if you possibly think you need another staff or two outside, then that's up to the administrators to come up with the adjustments. But it's, it's a lot of material, but I think it's useful. Um, personally, I think it's useful and I think, uh, I think the staff and the administrators think it's useful as well.
Yeah.
We'd like that if you'd share-
I will. I'll get it to you.
...information with us about the kinds of things we're looking at overall and student perspectives about them in the beginning.
Yes, ma'am. I'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Just have one question. Um, you addressed what, um, the communication between the parent, you know, the parent being offered resources to, to help stem the child's behavior. What about communications for the student who's, for the parent of the student who was being bullied? I know you can't share, you were saying reasons why you wouldn't share-
The consequences.
The consequences.
Yes, ma'am.
And I understand, but do you, what do you tell the parent so that they know that something is being done or their situation?
On the form that was referenced, um, I think there is a feedback component or a part where, um, there has to be communication to the parent as, um, to what, um, the investigation, what was the conclusion of the investigation? So that information is then shared with the parent and I think guess from there, that administrator personally would ask that parent, what re, other resources do you need from us at this time? Whether you want your child to speak with someone regularly or just a check-in, checkout type thing. I'm trying to stay away from acronyms and programs and things of that nature, but all those children are afforded opportunity or should be afforded opportunities as well because just like the aggressor, they need support as well.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can add one thing though. Uh, OVAES is one component of what we do. Um, I don't want us to leave from this setting and thinking that that is the only approach that we take for correcting behaviors or, um, addressing behaviors. Um, Dr. Vereen is going to share in our wrap-up about various things that our counselors do, our teachers do in daily settings, our SEL components as far as our morning meetings with students. We take a positive behavior approach and we don't use PBIS or Capturing Kids Hearts, which are more so name brands, but we truly use a positive behavior intervention system in which we do address and add consequences as well as the interventions that Mr. Cohen's has noted. And I will share that, um, while the OVAES system does provide survey data, we monitor monthly our data. Um, that is not just a yearly approach, but it is a monthly approach. And things that we get from that data includes where the things may be happening, what time it may be happening, um, which classrooms. That allows us to have more of a direct targeted approach to where we need to address our awareness. So, um, please don't think that our, um, presentation is singular in terms of a fix, but this is a holistic approach in which it does require all systems working together, all components of the academics and student services, safety, um, finance, human resources. It's a team effort and together we, we are addressing. And then there's just all the parents and community who are out there, we do say, if you have a situation, please feel free to reach out to us as well if you have not, um, reached a solution that you are satisfied with or if you want another ear or another eye, set of eyes on it.
Yeah. Well, my only comment is, and I'm all for a holistic approach, but in my experience, nothing changes behavior like consequences that are well communicated and evenly applied. And I think if we're going to communicate to parents and students, they ought to know pretty clearly some specific consequences if they bully.
Thank you.
My only comment.
Before Dr. Vereen comes up to close us out, I just wanted to address, um, Mr. Cox's or maybe Dr. Giles wants to address Dr. Cox's, um, comment about assemblies because we did something a few weeks ago, I think that, you know, just a reset. We've only been in school a few weeks, but we've already had to reset several times. And one of the things our schools actually were charged with doing was having behavior assemblies to, um, make sure that our students were understanding the behavioral expectations and also the consequences of their behavior. So that happened, I think about two weeks ago. It was last Monday and Tuesday, I believe.
That's awesome.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, well, just to echo even what Dr. Giles was sharing, uh, the efforts are indeed ongoing and it's a holistic and can interconnected approach. Our school counselors pay, play a pivotal role in that, uh, in that they're able to work with students individually. They have a small group and then whole class efforts and opportunities where they're able to deliver this instruction and teach students, uh, so that they will, uh, be aware of what we're talking about in terms of bullying. They take advantage of those home room times, those advisories or even those leadership, uh, group settings in order to inform and educate our students. So it becomes a campus-wide, uh, effort and initiative. Also too, we do understand as you all were sharing, the significance of, uh, having all the stakeholders, all the, uh, key components and our parents are definitely a part of that. And so we want to, uh, in the area of parent awareness, to develop more programs where we are able to, uh, engage our parents in this conversation and to get the, the terminology and the full understanding as we move forward so that it'll be a full, uh, K-12 approach. I do thank this, uh, board because you were so kind when we came and presented a curriculum, an SEL curriculum for our elementary grades that you were on board and we were able to, uh, get approval using those ESER funds in order to get that Quaver-ready curriculum into our elementary grades. And we are researching so that we can have something similar, age-appropriate for middle school, age-appropriate for high school. So the efforts are continuous, they are ongoing. And finally, I do want to remind us that next month is National Bullying Prevention Month and we have our students that'll be engaged, staff will be engaged. Uh, it even flows out into our communities where we do all hands-on deck, the full-fledged initiative so that everyone knows what is going on and can support what we're trying to do with our students and in our schools. So we just wanted to share a brief presentation with you all on tonight. So thank you so much for, for your time.
Thank you. I'd like to thank-
Dr. Vereen, if you could make a note to, to let us know where those events are going to be held and when and times and Mr. Stuckey, if you can do the same, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vereen and Mr. Stuckey and Mr. Cohen. Very informative discussion. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we're going into some of our action items. The first thing is our personnel list. The administration recommends approval of the personnel list as presented.
So moved. Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion is carried. The next is a list, our final, second and final readings of many different policies. We're going to go zip through those. The first one is the administration recommends the second and final reading approval combining policies IFD and IFE with policy IGA Basic Instruction Program as presented.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion, the policy is passed. The administration recommends the final approval of combining policies IFE-R Curriculum Modification Assessment with policy IGA Basic Instructional Program as presented.
So moved.
It's been moved. It's been second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion, the policy is passed. The administration recommends the second and final reading approval of striking through all outdated language and updating to the current law as presented, that is with policy IGBH Instruction.
So moved.
It's been moved and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion is carried. The administration recommends the final reading approval of striking through all outdated language and updating to the current law as presented with policy IGBH-R Instruction.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Policy IGCA Summer School and Extended Year, the administration recommends the second and final reading approval of striking through extended year and updating the language to meet the needs of identified students.
So moved. Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Wow. And everybody left. We ran everybody out.
Exciting stuff.
Okay. Board Superintendent comments or requests?
Um, I have a comment or maybe a future discussion to throw out there. Um, when I was home reading the newspaper, well, I guess that's online, seeing newspapers, that, um, the Pittsburgh Public Schools have put into a policy that they are appointing, well, you can, they appoint two students to be on the school board. They are non-voting, but it gives them a student perspective. Now, they, they started it last year and they went through the whole policy and, um, I guess they'll, they'll start it in September. Students have to apply for it, that sort of thing. Um, and I can do more research about it, but I would just kind of throw in that, what, what y'all thought about maybe doing that. And if not students, maybe, um, our teacher of the year or teachers of the year, you know, just to give us, and I mean, I know we do our best. We get into schools, we do this, we talk and, but just to give us another perspective. And of course, they would be non-voting, somebody would be part of it, us and, you know, just, but anyway, I just kind of wanted to throw that out there. If you want me to do some more research on that and bring it back and I'll talk to Lindsay Anne and see if that's even something we can do and, you know.
Absolutely.
Just kind of an idea, just to get, we can, we can never-
We can have that discussion at a future board meeting.
Right. And we can never hurt to get more information, right?
Thank you.
From a different perspective.
Good idea.
Bill, I just wanted to say, uh, even though everybody from Planville left except for one, uh, thank you. Thank you to the Planville community. I thought tonight's presentation for me was even more effective than me going there, seeing them and seeing our kids come here and you've seen the growth that has been made at Planville Elementary School. And that's what I'm talking about. When I go there and I see that, that's what I'm very concerned about interrupting, uh, understanding all the components that plays a part, but that's what I'm most concerned about is interrupting the growth that we're seeing out of our kids. So to those kids, let them, regardless of what happened, regardless of what happened, they can still do and be whatever they want to be if they just continue to work hard and for the parents to come out and support them. If all of that continues regardless of what happened, our kids can still be successful. So thank you to the Planville community for coming out.
Dr. Giles?
Um, good evening again. I'll be brief. First, uh, welcome back from Labor Day. I hope that everyone enjoyed a safe as well as a restful extended weekend. On last week, we had bookkeepers training, so I want to salute Ms. Johnson as well as the entire Business Services Department for hosting that training and our school bookkeepers for participating and ensuring that we are abreast of all financial rules and regulations for us to be in compliance. So a huge salute to that group of individuals. Also, thank you, Ms. Kibler, for leading our kids in Lids on last week. You may have visited schools or visited this campus and noticed that several people were in hats inside the building, but that was a good thing because we were sponsoring and supporting kids, um, who are faced with cancer. All funds, um, received through the, through the fundraiser will stay in Georgetown County school, school area in our county. So we're thankful for all those who participated. And lastly, just an additional salute to those in the Healthy Alliance Group that, uh, participated in our schools. You know, our motto this year does say, let's move and celebrate. And please note that the movement is not just academically that we're looking to do. We want to continue to encourage physical movement, movement in our schools, not only with our students, but our staff as well. And let's continue to celebrate the good things that are happening. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have an executive session for the purpose of discussion of superintendent interviews. Is there a motion that we go in executive session?
So moved.
Moved and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are now in executive session. Is there a motion that would come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion that we adjourn?